This is the December 4th, 2014 meeting of the Scarborough Board of Education. Could we have the roll call please, Mrs. Sizemore?
Mrs. Bealy?
Here.
Mrs. Chiazo?
Here.
Mrs. Lang?
Here.
Mrs. Massengill?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Perry?
Here.
Mrs. Shea?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't believe so.
Dr. Antwistle, would you give your report please?
Oh, I will. I have some quick items that I want to provide to you as updates in advance of a topic that I'd like to focus on in tonight's report. The quick updates include our art and science modules, which is our across-the-district education effort at every school. And this month, we are rolling out the art and science module number three. I think it's important to know that these are custom grown right here in Scarborough. We're using Marzano materials, but we're actually developing each of those modules. And this module number three, which is being delivered in December, will have an emphasis on strengthening and deepening the professional learning that's happening in our professional learning teams, which is a good thing. Second, the Marzano performance evaluation professional growth model. I think it's important for everybody to know that the preparation and rollout of the planned pilot project is going very, very well and is on schedule. We've had more than 20 teachers volunteer to be sort of our guinea pigs, are the test participants in this pilot, and they are getting some advanced training in terms of the system and some orientation to that. I think it's critically important as well to know that the Leadership Council has designated as part of every one of our Leadership Council meetings, time that we spend in learning both the Eye Observation System, which is the Marzano Evaluation System, and as well, we're getting oriented to the Eye Academy, which is the collection of all of the Marzano resources that are available for professional development. And they are amazing. They include videos, sample lessons, you name it. And it's in a very, very extensive library. This is a great, very robust program. And the more, I know from my perspective, the more I see it, the more I get involved, the more I am into the system and getting ready to, we're all getting ready to do observation walkthroughs with those test teachers, I am really impressed with the system. The classroom, I have a classroom visiting schedule that continues to keep me very busy. I find myself in classrooms almost every day. And I am pleased to share with the board that I see great things, and I'm hearing very positive feedback from both new and veteran teachers about the work that they're doing, the excitement they have about the work that they're doing, and the support that they're receiving within each of their schools. So that's a good report. What I want to do is I want to share a video with you as a bit of an introduction. Let me just tell you that this video was made at the Wentworth School. These are all Wentworth students, and they are going to tell you about this thing called Hour of Code. This is about five minutes.
Maybe so.
(laughing)
Sorry, what's that again? Uh-uh. Sorry, it worked earlier.
There comes Kelly.
I can't wait! I'm getting excited! It's almost here! Hour of Code!
Hour of Code is a one-hour instruction bound teaching this to the out of computer science, and so that anyone can learn the basics.
Ten million students of all ages have tried it.
Wentworth School will be joining other students worldwide to participate in this year's Hour of Code.
Why are we doing Hour of Code, you ask?
When we grow up, there'll be huge need for computer programmers.
The number of computer science jobs are increasing three times faster than the number of computer science graduates.
At this rate, by 2020, there'll be more than 1 million computing jobs on sale. These are great jobs.
Ninety percent of our schools don't need computer science. This means ninety percent of kids don't have the experience to prepare them for technology jobs with the teachers.
Everybody knows technology is moving fast. It shouldn't be passing us by.
We all want technology to help us, but how does technology actually work?
Computers can't do anything unless they're given a set of instructions that make it do something.
A computer program is actually a set of instructions with a recipe. Because recipes have to follow them step by step to get the right end result.
Computers can be really smart, but they can only do what someone tells them to do.
The direction they're actually written instructions that get entered into the computer.
Who writes these instructions? Computer programmers, also known as coders. Programming is how sites like Facebook, games like Minecraft, and apps like Instagram are made.
Knowing how to program is like having a superpower. It's a skill that not only teaches you how to work with computers, but also teaches you how to think about solving problems.
Programming is fun and easy.
Learning these skills isn't just important for your future, it's important for our country's future. If we want America to stay on the cutting edge, we need young Americans like you to master the tools and technology that will change the way we do just about everything. That's why I'm asking you to get involved. Don't just buy a new video game, make one. Don't just download the latest app, help design it. Don't just play on your phone programming.
Hour of Code at Wentworth is really a two-hour event. One hour will be a rotation. Groups of three classes will rotate through four presenters, spending 10 minutes with each presenter. The presenters will talk about the importance of learning to code, show what a computer program really does, and how it makes the computer work. Presenters will also help students understand the process of developing an app or other program. Some presenters will even involve students in some unplugged activities that involve coding skills. The other hour will be using your laptop to do an Hour of Code. You will be given a website to visit, and you will select coding activities from there. This will be your first taste of programming.
We all depend on technology to communicate, to bank, and none of us know how to read and write code.
The first program I wrote asked things like, "What's your favorite color?" or "How old are you?"
I wrote a program to play tic-tac-toe.
I first learned how to make a green circle and a red square appear on the screen.
You're just trying to make something, trying to transfer something from your mind to the computer or to a tablet is an experience.
The whole limit in the system is just that there just aren't enough people who are trained and have these skills today.
The programmers of tomorrow are the wizards of the future. You know, you're gonna look like you have magic powers compared to everybody else.
Great coders are today's rock stars. That's it.
There are many choices available to you during classroom Hour of Code.
They all seem like fun and games.
But they're really helping you to understand how a depth of skin can make a computer work.
You might get stuck or hit roadblocks. It's okay. The idea is to experiment, try things, and figure it out on your own.
Even though this is a few hours of our time, the learning goes way beyond that. It doesn't matter how old you are, anyone can still do it.
It's actually easy to learn. Don't let anyone tell you that you can't.
Whether you're a young man or a young woman, whether you live in a city or a rural area, computers are gonna be a big part of your future. And if you're willing to work and study hard, that future is yours to shape.
If you are a video game player, a book lover, an artist, a TV junkie, a sports lover, or a computer user, Hour of Code has something in store for you.
So what you've just seen is the video that was made at Wentworth by Wentworth Kids for Wentworth Kids in introducing this Hour of Code. So let me just give you some details about what's happening in the Scarborough Public Schools. Preparations are underway for students at all of our schools to participate in the Hour of Code, which you now know what that is. It's a massive global event designed to engage students in computer science by providing online and offline coding activities. The goal this year is to reach 100 million students by the end of 2014. The event kicks off December 8th, and it runs through the 14th. Last year, over 15 million students across 170 countries participated, providing students with the opportunity to explore how to code a computer or write software is a really important opportunity, not only in learning more about how computers work, but it also promotes critical thinking, creativity, which are, as we know, important skills for the future. This year, with the assistance of Scarborough's Technology Coaches, planning's been underway for several weeks. All students at the primary school, yes, K, one, two, will be involved in learning about coding through a variety of activities. One of these involves learning how to program a B-bot to move from one location to a destination in order to pollinate a flower. So they're actually writing code to move this B-bot to get it in the right place to pollinate the flower. Kinda cool. At Wentworth School, as you saw, all students will be participating in a series of events on one day, December 10th. They'll be online, working through tutorials where they'll be able to learn some code. Students will also be learning more about coding from computer scientists, programmers who are volunteering their time to share what they do. And in preparation, students have created and produced this informal video that will be shared with their peers in advance of the event. At the middle school, the Computer Club has created a promotional video as well that students will view prior to the week of the events. During the week of December 8th, next week, all middle school students will be participating in online coding activities during their science classes. In preparation, all staff has access to the Hour of Code resources to experience coding so that they can help support the students in what the students are exploring. At the high school, where all students are unable to participate online, given the limited access to computers, the plans are still going ahead and will involve encouraging as many students as possible to participate. Promotional announcements are being made, encouraging students to participate during study halls in the library computer lab, which will be reserved for the purpose of the Hour of Code. A portion of the freshman class will participate through their technology courses. I had the pleasure of being in one of those technology courses today, and I got to see some kids present their, sort of wrapping up and presenting some final projects. One freshman boy got up there, and I have to tell you, it was truly unbelievable what he did in terms of finding the code and inserting the code, and he was creating his own website that was a website that would tell people about his favorite video games to play. Do they still call them video games? Is that what they're called? All right. (laughing) It's been a while. And you know, I was just like, I was blown away. And he's like, he was very disappointed that he actually had not, you know, gotten to the point of activating this thing, but he had spent hours and hours and hours on it. It was really, it was very impressive and actually pretty exciting. The other portion will participate in the spring semester, the other portion of freshmen, I guess. And planning is underway to involve additional students in coding activities at a later date in an effort to promote a proposed new course in computer sciences. The folks that have been really key in this are Courtney Graffius, Joellen Clive at the middle school. Courtney is K-2, and she's also the K-12 Technology Instructional Coach. And Holly Graffum at the middle school as well. And I'm sure that there are many more people that have been involved.
Alicia.
Alicia. And I know that Monique has taken a very active role in getting involved. So I thought this was, this is coming up next week, and as you can see, we're pretty excited about it. And it's nice to be part of something that is national and global. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And 6.0 is the chair's report. We have the committee assignments to announce this evening, and so I'm gonna go right through them. Correct me if I have anything wrong, we got quite a bit here. We have a little bit of a change in our finance committee. So for chair, Christopher Chiazo, Christine Massengill will join him, and as will I, Donna Bealy. And again, all board members are invited to attend our finance meetings. For negotiations, Jackie Perry will be chair, Kelly Murphy will join her, Christine Massengill will join her. I will be the alternate in that position. On policy, Kelly Murphy will chair, joined by Jody Shea and Jane Lang. Communications, Jody Shea will chair, joined by Kelly Murphy and myself. For liaison positions within the legislature, Jackie Perry will be our contact. Teacher evaluation will be done by Jane Lang. The Sebago Alliance Group will be done by Christine Massengill. Health Safety and Security Advisory Team will be done by Kelly Murphy. Education and Business Council will be Christopher Chiazo. And finally, vocational will be done by Jody Shea. Any questions?
If we could just get a copy of that, Donna, so that Kelly has that. We do up a format and put that all together.
Yesterday, I attended the assessment conference. We had quite a few people in our district who went to that. Most of them were from the work being done for teacher evaluation. The conference was amazing. It's hard to know where to begin to explain it to somebody who doesn't know a whole lot about assessment work, and that includes me. I heard a new term yesterday, it's called assessment literacy. And that is, who are the experts, and how do we know? How to develop assessments that are valid, reliable? How to develop questions that make sense for the work that you're teaching? And then how do we put it all together in order to take a look at ways in which we can add that component to a teacher's evaluation? It is amazing work. It will take hundreds of hours of our staff in order to figure out this work. Fortunately, our district is well underway in terms of the upfront work that we have done, that we've been telling you about right along for the past year and a half. So it was an exciting conference, but also really spoke volumes to me about the same message that we received two weeks ago from our principals, which was time. We need time to do this work. So I think that's my message to you all. I had the good fortune to sit behind, coincidentally, Senator Millet when I was at the Muske Institute Recognition Program a couple of weeks ago at UXM. So I got involved in her on the topic of what about computers for the smarter balance assessment that's coming up this spring that I know you are all concerned about for our high school students? How are they going to take up to six hours of testing and have no computers to do it on? So what has really come down now is that from the Department of Ed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Sizemore, the schools are being notified very fairly recently that they need to submit to the state what their issues are around that assessment, what are their problems going to be, what are their needs going to be, in order so that all of those kids can take the testing. Now remember, it's 3 through 8 and grade 11. So I'm assuming you have received that, and so each town is being asked to let the state know what the problems are. So I was kinda glad to hear that, but I won't be happy until I know what the answers are. Finally, I have invited Mr. Baybine, a new member of the town council. He is the finance chair from the town council, and he is the liaison to the school board. So he's going to introduce himself and talk to us a little bit. So why don't you take the microphone?
You're not using the new little thing the council's using, right?
Yes.
(laughing)
We installed a trapdoor as well.
We talked about it last week. I gotta tell you, watching that video was incredible because I always like to try to break the ice a little bit. 14 years ago, I had a chance to get elected to the school board in which I sat with Miss Perry. And my little eight-year-old is now a 22-year-old senior in college, so it aged me a little bit watching those young people talking about computers and the work that you guys have done. So I think it's absolutely incredible of what you've done. I'm not gonna go through a long introduction. I think just about everyone I've been introduced to at some point, just a quick background. I've been in town for about 20 years. I've served on the school board for two, from 2000 to 2002, so I've dealt with what you're dealing with, even though on a much shorter basis, at a much different time, and under a very different administration. And I've actually served on the town council, as you know, three previous terms, a little bit broken up in there for having moved out of town, and now I'm back and enjoying life of living permanently here in Scarborough. The purpose of coming here wasn't really the introductions, it's more about to convey a message of support by our town council. We understand and we share in the commitment that we have to our schools, and we know that a big part of that commitment requires us to build a relationship. And so Jessica Holbrook, our new chairperson, has asked me to take on the job of being finance chair, which I've had in the past, and we know it's gonna be a very difficult year, dealing with the state, dealing with local issues, and then dealing with our relationship as well, and then becoming also the school board liaison, although I don't believe it was intentional that both positions go to the same person, because it has been split in the past, but there was some convenience because of my background with you and having worked with the board, and which I'm very, very excited. This past week, I actually did have a wonderful chance to have a sit-down meeting with Dr. Antwistle, as well as with Chris and the town manager, and myself, to talk about how we can begin that dialogue and open that relationship to developing a really strong approach to how we deal, not only with finances, but how we govern the town together. Because they're both very important parts of the town, and we want to share in that responsibility. And we've always shared in it, we've just lacked a little bit of communication, or what communication maybe in the past has been a little bit challenged. You know, I mentioned the other day when we were talking that decisions usually don't, I don't believe decisions cause conflicts. It's usually the communication that comes out of that decision that causes it. And that's what I'm hoping to work with your chairperson, as well as with Councilor Holbrook and Chris as well, to see how we can calm that rhetoric and really become advocates for both of our budgets, because it's a very, very big task. And we know that, and we share in that with you. And so the other piece as well is to kinda give you an understanding, because unfortunately, I was not here in town when the last position was filled, so I'm not sure of expectations that were developed, but I always like setting my own path. And so some items that I've put forward to Ms. Bealy have been, the first is that I'd like to set up an actual ongoing regular meeting where her and I can have a cup of coffee to talk about our relationship. As far as I'm concerned, as long as I don't have a quorum of the school board or a quorum of the town council, anyone's welcome for the coffee, because I want to hear about that relationship so that I can share it privately or necessarily publicly with the rest of the members of the boards. But then also have asked to have interim meetings with management and our boards, as well as with Mr. Chiazo as part of the finance committee, so that we have really one message coming out of finance. And we have really one message going back that is consistent to my council, I should say our council, and to the school board as a whole, so that there isn't two different underscoring messages going on in the town. And then really, the third is to, not to be a regular participant in your meetings, but to come maybe once every other month. I was gonna say once, I almost flipped and said once every other meeting, but that might be a little bit too much, but at least to come and field any questions and, you know, to give me a heads up on any issues, and maybe I can answer questions publicly so that the public can be involved in that dialogue as well. One of the items that we did, and I know Mr. Chiazo is gonna be talking a little bit about it, we have talked about our first finance committee meeting, and having it in a joint, even though I took the lead to get it started because I really wanted to come out of the gate really pushing hard, is to really have a joint workshop where we talk about what are our expectations, what are the areas of improvement. We've taken actually the same survey that Dr. Antwistle provided to you, and I've shared it with my board, and they're gonna be providing back feedback, and we're gonna combine those together and look at what our commonalities are, see if there's opportunities where we might just be off by one or two little pieces of information that can actually find a new resolution, and then really identify where we want to move forward so that we can have a stronger relationship with you, and really develop stronger results for the entire community as a whole. But then the last and final piece is obviously interaction with the entire board. My number and my email are always open, I have an open-door policy, you're welcome to give me a call. Please don't call the house after 8:00. That was one of the concessions I had to make with my wife this time around. So I gave her permission to buy one of those blowhorns that she's gonna blow into the phone, so be careful if you call after 8:00 at the house, but you're welcome to call me on my cellphone. You get some really wild calls in this town, so it can be very, very interesting. But you are always welcome to give me a call, I'm always around town to have a cup of coffee or to find lunch. And with that, Ms. Bealy, I just wanna say thank you very much for being open, and Dr. Antwistle, it was wonderful meeting you. And I do have to, of course, mention the joke that I mentioned, that my daughter actually, as a wonderful student of a different district, and particularly Cape Elizabeth, actually had it run in with Dr. Antwistle when he was chairman of the board. And the reason is that as chairman of the board, but also as a board member, you have those difficult decisions of what you must eliminate or reduce, and my daughter was actually captain of the state mock trial team for Cape Elizabeth, in which they were contemplating student activities there as well. So she heard, or I should say, he heard a Baybine tongue once before. She was extremely polite and wonderful, and I promise that I plan on doing the same. So thank you very much.
(laughing) Gotta hold you to that.
Absolutely, sir. But thank you very much.
Thank you. 7.0 is the committee reports. You'll notice we moved the committee reports up a little bit earlier in our program, so that, I think there's a lot of important work going on there, and those things need to be heard. So, Ms. Perry?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, please. Negotiations first, the team will meet with the administrative team on the 9th, and with the custodians on the 17th, both in December. Those are the only two groups that we will be negotiating with this year. Hallelujah, brother. I also have, on the 13th, as a representative of main school boards, I will be a participant in a panel with the SAD VI Board of Directors, helping them with some boardsmanship, you know.
So, she heard, or I should say, he heard a Baybine tongue once before. She was extremely polite and wonderful, and I promise that I plan on doing the same. So, she's very much going to hold you to that. Absolutely, sir. But thank you very much.
Thank you. 7.0, the committee reports. You'll notice we moved the committee reports up a little bit earlier in our program, so that I think there's a lot of important work going on there, and those things need to be heard. So, Ms. Perry?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, please. Negotiations, first, the team will meet with the administrative team on the 9th, and with the custodians on the 17th, both in December. Those are the only two groups that we will be negotiating with this year. Hallelujah, brother. I also have, on the 13th, as a representative of main school boards, I will be a participant in a panel with the SAD 6 Board of Directors, helping them with some boardsmanship. You know, I think they have 14 or 15 members of their Board of Directors, and evidently have had some reasons to wonder how they should conduct themselves. So, the Director and Associate Director of MSBA will be coming down, and I will be among three active School Board members who are members of the Board of Directors of main school boards who will help them out and answer questions. So, we'll spend the morning, if it doesn't snow, on the 13th. And then, on, what date is it? The 12th, December 12th, we'll have a teleconference with the Legislative Committee of main school boards, and moving proactively, we hope, to set an agenda for the Legislature, addressing concerns from the Commission to strengthen the adequacy and equity of certain cost components of school funding formula, right? Charter of School Funding, which is always in the forefront of all of us who are getting whacked with that cost, and general purpose aid funding, and the Governor's Budget Release January 9. And the Labor, evidently, the Legislature is considering, under Section 13201, changing the probationary period from three to seven years. Don't think.
Just change to three.
Changing the statute of obligation to bargain use of private contractors, and the discussion of a statewide teacher's contract. So, under proficiency diploma, reducing the number of areas required. So, these are all evidently topics in the forefront of the Legislature that we, as your representatives, will be discussing in our Legislative Committee meeting. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Langs?
I was fortunate enough to go to the first eye observation training today at the middle school with all the junior-school teacher volunteers. There was a very, you know, I was very fortunate to, you know, meet them the first time, and see what the action system can do. It's actually more than evaluation, actually, I realize. It's actually also educational system. You have different modules, and you can set your own professional goals. You can track it. You can take, watch videos, even for different topics in different grades, you have, you know, kind of corresponding, you know, material you can learn from them. I think it's, looks like, very exciting, and it seems like the teachers enjoy the learning process, so I was, I'm very excited to be a part of it.
Thank you.
The Bago Education Alliance meeting for December has been canceled, so January is their next one, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Murphy?
So, we got iced out of our policy meeting yesterday, but our previous meeting, we discussed, we're still going through the policies we just have, but don't have to have. They're not required, they're not recommended, but just policies we have in our book. We did go back and review some that had recently been evaluated, including communications, how the School Department communicates with particularly parents, and making some changes, just modernizing it a more electronic, and how we are going to deal with outside groups who would like to reach the target audience of students and parents. So, we're working on that policy. There's also one about security cameras, and there's a question of whether or not that should be a policy or administrative procedure, so we're figuring that out. And there's also another policy that we're discussing about what materials can be distributed at school events, like a football game, or even a dance, I guess, or whatever. So, will we allow other people to distribute information, whether it's school-related or not? So, that's also on our agenda. So, we will now meet on the 17th at 9:30. We're trying to meet every two weeks, and we were supposed to meet yesterday but got iced out. And then also, this morning, we had, as a subgroup of the Health, Safety and Security Task Team, the climate, School Climate and Culture, I think we just had our last meeting today, because we had accomplished our goals, and the small little task force was about really seeing how, what was going on in the schools as far as risky behaviors and bullying, and we really used this Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey that's from Maine Public Health. They administer the test, and our students are due to take it again in the fall, and 6th through 12th graders take it. And so now, there's actually a team at the high school that has developed from our work, so we've kind of made ourselves obsolete, which is great. So, we're kind of blending into other, into other teams, so it's no longer a necessary subcommittee. And also, the facilities group has also melted into other groups because everything we can do with facilities right now has been handled as-
Technology and facilities.
Technology and facilities. So, all the new security doors have already been installed, and extra security cameras, and so all of these things have happened. And so, kind of like a little graduation. We've done, we've done a lot of work in that committee, so our next big target we talked about was what might come out of the community dialogue, and what parents and teachers and students are interested in, things that might give us a new focus. So, it was good. Good meeting. That's it.
Very good. What's next?
Communications. We also did not meet yesterday, not specifically because of the ice, but we will meet again on the 14th. That meeting will be after policy, so probably 10:30.
14th or 17th?
17th, sorry. And one of the things that has sort of come up in the last couple of weeks, Donna has been in touch with Chief Thurlow, who has a regular column in the Leader, and he has agreed to allow us to jump into that column on a regular basis. So, going forward, every, you know, four, five, six weeks, we'll have a regular column in the Leader.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Castle?
Finance is busy as usual. Quite a few things to talk about. We've decided to fix the dates for future Finance Committee meetings. They will be at 6:00 PM before the first business meeting of the Board, so that's every, the first Thursday, I think, of every month, just for continuity's sake. So, they are open to the public. Anybody's able to attend that wishes to attend, if we have a small enough audience, it's usually up in the superintendent's conference room. If we have a larger audience and can't accommodate that upstairs, we can always move to a different location, whether it's Chambers B or down here. But for future, going forward, it will be at 6:00 PM every Thursday, the first Thursday of every month, before a regularly scheduled business meeting. Please, though, keep looking at the website, because if it is canceled for whatever reason, that's where we will post it, and that's where the notifications will go out. Councilor Baybine, as he mentioned, there's going to be a meeting on December 10th. It's going to be between, from 4:00 to 5:30, I believe, in Chambers A down here, or I'm not sure where exactly it's going to be.
Somewhere in this building. I don't know.
Okay.
The agenda will be posted.
The agenda is coming out. I'm personally very enthusiastic about moving forward. We've been, I know we've been working very strongly for the past couple of years trying to get this process working. It's very refreshing and encouraging to hear the responses from Councilor Baybine. As he mentioned, we sat down with Dr. Entwistle and Tom Hall, had a very productive discussion, a very cordial and very professional discussion. I was very encouraged by that, and I think we've set the tone. I hope that that tone continues, and I'm looking forward to some really positive results that we get from that. I think it's, Councilor Baybine hit it on the head. It's our town. We've got to move forward collectively together. We've got to find ways to manage and govern and secure the resources that we need, both on the town side and on the school side. So, very much looking forward to that. Unfortunately, I don't want to set off on the wrong foot right out of the chute, but I will be out of town on December 10th for the first meeting. I'm traveling on business, but Donna, Bealy will be there, Christine will be there, Dr. Entwistle, and I believe maybe Kate Bolton from our side as well will be there. So, we'll be very well represented. I'm very, very confident that we'll be able to still have a very productive meeting and look forward to the results moving forward. The Finance Committee did meet, which most of you were present, but for the public's information, we're working on setting some goals for next year. We have a list of many, many, many potential goals. We're going to filter through those, and I'm hoping that we'll have something more firm and solid to report out to the entire Board for the next meeting. As an aside, I was also the liaison on the, for lack of a better word, the Hockey Committee. And I did want to report out, I'm not sure if the Council has had their meeting regarding that already. They probably have. Yeah. It also was a very encouraging setting. We were well represented. Mr. Legage was there as well from the administration side. Councilor Donovan was there. Bruce Gulliver was facilitating the meeting. Again, very cordial, very professional, very good meeting. The library was there, represented. I thought it was a very good collaborative effort, and I think what came out was the definition of a real compromise. It wasn't the perfect spot, I don't think, for anybody, but I think after all was said and done, we weighed traffic, we weighed safety and things like that, and with the understanding that's extremely preliminary, but it at least gives some guidance moving forward for the friends of the hockey group to move forward with their plans. So, everything is, still has to go through the normal processing. Nothing is set in stone, but I think it was important both for the hockey group, for us, and also for the Council as well, to get some definitive action and some real understanding of what the location needs to be. So, very, very pleased with that outcome, and looking forward to another opportunity to be able to do that again. That's pretty much it, I think. We'll continue along again for the Finance Committee. Everybody's more than welcome to attend, as we said, and I'll make sure the agenda goes out at least a week or so before that meeting schedule.
Good. Thank you. Do we have any school reports tonight, Emma?
Yes, I haven't been in contact with Kristin though, so I don't have the middle school or high school report, but I have Wentworth and primary schools. Wentworth had their most successful book fair ever done this November. They raised over $14,000 worth of books, and they made a profit of $3,500. So, they will use this money to pay for author visits, buying more books, and they'll fund a conference for the library ed techs. They're asking Sarah Thompson to come speak to all the students in March, and she's an author from Portland. Also, an expert on Learning Commons, David Lershur, came from Salt Lake City to visit the Learning Commons on November 18th. He teaches at the graduate level and travels the world helping people plan Learning Commons. Several of his books on Learning Commons had been consulted during the process of building it this summer, and as he left the school, he complimented Wentworth's Learning Commons to be the most fantastic space he has seen. So, I thought that was amazing. And in all, in all the schools, the Beanie Baby Drive has, to benefit Partners for World Health, has begun this week. Lillian Finley, who came to present to us last week, or last meeting, excuse me, she has organized this for her second year in a row, and boxes were placed in the main offices of all the schools, and collection will continue through the 12th of December. The Beanie Babies will be shipped to orphanages to bring gifts to the unfortunate children this holiday season. I've already heard students in the high school talking about the Beanie Baby Drive, and I just think it's wonderful that we're already hearing that kids are excited to bring in their old Beanie Babies and support them. On an aside, I'd like to talk about the coding, the hour of code that's going on. When the, when I took the technology for the 21st Century class in freshman year, my favorite part of that class was learning about the codes, and I just think it's amazing that we're dedicating like a whole two hours of this to the younger kids. I think it's something that not, we don't like know how to do that yet, like when we're learning about the other things that we're taught in the technology for the 21st Century class, we kind of already knew how to do them, how to set up an email, how to set up a Prezi. That's kind of, we kind of know how to do that already. So, I think it's great that we're learning the codes, and that was my favorite part, so I'm very excited about that.
That's awesome. Great. Thank you. And I'm Pordell, recognition.
Yes, I do have a couple of items. This is from the middle school, 7th grade math team, and that would include Connor Knatsi, Wesley Chalmers, Lucas Hofsis, Charlie Lang, Bambi Joern, Jacob Pardee, Emily Huntington. They all placed second in their very first team competition at the middle, and that was held at the middle school of the Kennebunks on December 2nd. And of special note, Lucas Hofsis and Charlie Lang tied for third place with their individual scores across the whole competition. So, congratulations to all of our math scholars. I was wishing that our friend Kristin Murray was here, because I wanted to also recognize her as Scarborough Fall Athlete of the Year. And so, we have a celebrity among us. She was the Female Athlete of the Year. The male was Drew Kane, and Drew is a junior golfer. And so, congratulations to both Kristin and to Drew.
Thank you. Under new business, 10.1, minutes of November 20th. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve is presented. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven plus one. 10.2, appointments. The high school co-curricular appointment. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? We've all seen.
Do we have any idea? Are there-
High school, yes. More coaches. We're done with co-curricular.
You knew there was going to be a-
I have it written down right here, Mrs. Bassengill.
Thank you.
It was either going to come from that side or from this side.
We're taking turns.
Shame on me if I were to miss this time.
We're the Dollar folks here.
And what I don't know, Kelly knows. So, together, we're ready. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor? 7.1. Thank you. 10.2.2, middle school winter coaching appointments. Motion?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
Sure. Just looking down.
Yes, Mr. Ciazzo, there are more coaches, and no, we are done with co-curricular.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Entwistle.
You're welcome.
We're almost not even having to speak.
Anyone else? All in favor? Seven, seven plus one.
Mrs. Bealy? Yes. I would like to point out that our athletic teams start their winter season this weekend.
And I also believe, just hopping on Ms. Perry's comment, that we will have our celebration of the fall athletes at your next meeting.
That's good.
There's a lot to celebrate.
And there's a lot to celebrate.
At the workshop.
Yes, it will just be in advance at the workshop, I believe.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from anyone on the Board? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Still move?
Second. We have to vote.
We have to vote to end it. Oh, they had it all down pat.
You had it right to the end.